Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call our meeting to order. Welcome to our meeting this evening. We're going to have a roll call by our city clerk, Kathy Valdez.
The records show a flag that all members are present.
If you'll all rise, we're going to have a pledge of allegiance led by Deputy Mayor Franklin.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'd like to start our meeting with a moment of silence, so please join me in a moment of silence in honor of those killed and hurt in Gilroy, Dayton, and El Paso tragedies. Our thoughts and prayers are for the victims and for their families, so if you'd join me just for a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buenos Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. I'd like to remind everyone that the Vista Municipal Code requires members of the public to observe order and decorum at the meeting and to conduct themselves in a courteous manner. The ordinance was adopted to allow for a public input and to facilitate city business without disrupting the meeting. Applause is appropriate for items listed under the presentation portion of the agenda only. Attendees should remain seated during the meeting. Persons needing to stand are requested to step outside the city council chambers where video and audio of the meeting are playing. This is also listed on our agenda cover sheet. And to speak three minutes on an item on the agenda, if you want to fill out a speaker slip with the number of the item you want to speak on, give it to our clerk secretary down here. Speaker slips are available just outside the council chambers. And with that, we'll have the approval of our agenda by our city manager, Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes to the agenda this evening.
Okay, and tonight, we have one presentation, and that is our Sandag Executive Director, Hassan Akrada. Colleen? Is Colleen here? I don't see Colleen. No, just...
Ray Major.
Are you by yourself tonight?
Ray Major.
Oh, okay, okay. Ray Major will present on Sandag's big moves and the regional plan, so welcome to Vista.
Thank you very much. Good to be here. Thank you for having us. We appreciate...
Your mic is on. We can hear you.
Okay, good.
Oh, over there. Yeah, yeah, there you go.
Thank you, thank you.
Got it.
Got it, so, okay. Thank you very much. So, what you're going to hear today is about a vision that we're working on at Sandag. We call the Big Bold Vision with Five Big Moves. It is about the future of transportation in San Diego, the way we see it as staff. The board have asked us to move forward with developing the vision, but have not approved the vision yet. You're going to hear a lot of things, but very little detail today because we don't have it. And once we have these details, we will be happy to come back and talk to the council about the actual system. Right now, it's a vision with no detail, some information that are relevant, but a couple of things to remind the council of that we, like other regions in the state, are required to meet very specific state mandates. One of those state mandates is under SB 375 AB 32, which is the San Diego region have to reduce greenhouse gas emissions 19% per capita in 2035 compared to 2005. That's the way the law is written right now. If you look at the direction that the vehicle mile travel and greenhouse gas emission is going the other way, actually. It's going this way, and what we need to be to meet the requirement is at that green spot. So, we need to do something about it. And people ask, so what happened if we didn't meet the target? Very simple. We can't really build anything of any kind when it comes to transportation regardless of the funding source. Even if we have our local money, we can't move a regionally significant project forward if we don't have a plan that meets the target. We cannot receive any federal or state funding without an approved plan. So, the penalty for not reaching the target is severe. But that's not the only reason we're talking about Big Transportation Vision. The reason is we think this region deserves and needs a great transportation system that provide choices to the 3.3 million people that live here. For a long time at Sandag, we've been debating, okay, we propose a system, how do we pay for it? What funding source do we have to pay for it? There is a local sales tax measure called Transnet that the voters passed first time in 1987, renewed in 2004, that Hafeson Sales Tax was forecasted to generate in 2004 about $14 billion. After reexamining the numbers, it actually will generate half of that. The way it's done today, we are in 2019, between now and the end of this Transnet 2048. For the major corridors, Transnet is going to generate $6 billion total, 3.7 billion of which will go to pay the debt. The remaining 2.3 between now and 2048 is what we have available. 2.3 billion is in the expenditure year dollar. In today's dollar, that's about 1.4 billion. 80% of that will come after 2030. Right now, we have few hundred million dollars between now and 2030. And next month, I'm going to be asking the board to program these money. To be exact, asking the board next month to program $291.6 million to design projects, make them environmentally clear so they can compete for federal and state funding. The vision that we're talking about in Five Big Moves is about giving people choices. So, Ray and I drove the 15 today and drove on the 78. And we totally get the 78 and the 15 and the congestion issue. We also get that, we believe very strongly as staff, that you're not going to solve the problem with the 15 and 78 and the 5 and the 8 by building new lanes only. You have to look at the comprehensive transportation strategy that gives people choices, that expand the capacity of the system, but adds choices to the system. And these choices have to be as good as driving. If we want to build a transit line, if it's not as convenient or better than the car, nobody's going to take it. That's been proven time and again. People say, why invest in transit? It doesn't work today. Well, it doesn't work today because we don't have it the right. If it's going to take me three hours to get to the same trip that it takes 30 minutes in the car, I'm going to drive, and most of us do. So, Ray's going to explain to you why we think transit doesn't work and we need to do something. I just hope the region give us a chance to work on this, detail it, cost it. This is not going to be cheap. The money's not there, as I showed you on the Transnet, to pay for it. So, any talk of money is going to come later of how to pay for this. But this is an exciting time, actually. Today, we opened the Vision Lab that I invite all of you to come to and see our team, the engineers and planners, developing this. Without further ado, I'm going to introduce Ray Major, who I think one of the smartest people I know, who's going to go through the presentation. And I also want to take a chance to introduce Lindsay Alori. Raise your hand. Who's an amazing people working with the team. So, with that, I'll end it today.
Thank you very much. Before I start, I'd just like to talk a little bit about what we're doing and where we are right now with developing this new bold vision. When you think about what we're doing, we're really developing a transportation system for future generations because by the time this is built, by 2035, 2050, we're talking about the next generation of people really being able to use it. Currently, we have 3.3 million people who live in the region. By 2050, we expect that number to grow to about 4 million people, so 700,000 new people moving into the region. A lot of those people are going to be up here in the North County. And with that, today, we generate 84 million vehicle miles each and every day getting back and forth to where we go. And that number is expected to grow by about 24% by 2050 to 103 million vehicle miles each day if we don't do anything. And so, one of the things that Hassan tasked us with, and this is fundamentally different than the way we've done our other regional plans, is to take a look at the data and really come up with data-driven solutions to the problem. So, in the past few regional plans, what we've done is we've taken a look at the projects that we've had, and we've always kind of incremented that forward based upon how much money we had and based upon where we were with construction, and then we just moved those forward. But those plans were done 20 years ago. And so, now what we're doing is we're taking a look at currently what's existing on the ground, and we're taking a look at new technologies, and how could that be implemented to solve the problem? So, we're really starting from a fresh page when we do this. This particular map shows some of the critical connections that we're looking at. And as you can see, and I'll just concentrate on the North County, both 78 and the Palomar Airport Road are critical connections that we're looking at. There's been a tremendous amount of growth in the North County in the last 20 years, and we need to make sure that our plans accommodate the people who are up in this area. This also shows some of the other corridors that we're looking at, for instance, the 67, which is really needed for safety purposes and for an escape route for people who live in the back country. And then there are corridors like the Purple Line, for instance, that would connect the border all the way up to Oceanside. So, these are the critical connections that we're looking at. And what you notice when you look at the connections within San Diego, they kind of form this figure eight, okay? And the figure eight gives us the possibility of designing an alternative transportation form where people could get on and get off at different transfer points and get to where they're going. So, we're using a tremendous amount of data to really understand what it is that is happening in the region. And the first thing we did is we took a look at where do people live and where do they work? And so, we got a map that looks something like this. And the map on the left-hand side shows the concentration of where people live, and then the one on the right shows the 79 employment centers that we developed in preparation of the regional plan. And what we want to do is to understand how do those really overlay? And when you take a look at it, they're pretty much in the same place. But what we also realize is that the growth is in the western one-third of the region, but people don't necessarily live where they work. And so, we need to come up with a way of moving people from one place to another. And that's really where this figure eight comes in. So, the Five Big Moves, and if you think about these, they're not independent moves, and you can't just take one and implement it and think that it'll work. These are five strategies that work together to try to come up with a real solution to the problem. So, what we've been doing is this incremental improvement of our transportation system. What the Five Big Moves tries to do is to come up with a holistic approach and solve the problem once and for all. And so, when we look at this, we look at complete corridors. And complete corridors is one of the Five Big Moves. It talks about optimizing the current roadway structure that we have in place today. That's really the foundation of our transportation system, and we need to make that more effective for everybody. The next one is Transit Leap, and that is really giving people an alternative to driving. If we want to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, we want to reduce vehicle miles traveled, there has to be an alternative to single occupancy vehicles, and that's what Transit Leap helps us accomplish. The next is Mobility Hubs, which are activity centers and transfer points. Flexible Fleets is the fourth one, which really is the last mile option. And then, the next operating system, which is really enabling technology that ties this together. And this is something that has now come to fruition and is becoming more of a reality than even 10 years ago. You didn't hear about technology really being able to solve a lot of these transportation problems. So, let's take a look at these just a little bit more in depth. What a complete corridor is, is really these main corridors having alternate forms or choices on them. So, it would include things like lanes for single occupancy vehicles, like we currently have general-purpose lanes, but there would also be lanes that would be dedicated to high occupancy vehicles. There would be mass transit available on that, and there might be things like high-speed rail connecting different areas together. So, a complete corridor allowing people to get from one place to another using different types of transportation. The second one is really Transit Leap. And this is where we need to be able to offer an alternative to driving, which we currently don't have. And I'm going to show you a little bit later the data that shows that really why our current transit system doesn't work, and then we need to figure out a way to make that work. And really here, the key is it has to be as fast and as convenient. So, if this isn't going 80 or 90 miles an hour, it's not competing with the automobile. We can't run it at 25 or 30 miles an hour and expect people to want to take it if they can drive at 60 miles in a car. Mobility hubs are these transfer points and points of activity. So, this would be an area where, for instance, you got off, and if you think about the East Coast, this is where you may get off of a subway, for instance, and there are businesses around there, and there are higher-density housing around there. But it's also places where you could catch or call on your app, on your phone, a car to help you get to the last mile, a flexible fleet. And a flexible fleet, this is the new technology that's starting to come in. These could be autonomous electric vehicles that you could take and get from the transit stop to your home. Part of the biggest problem we have right now with transit is that last mile. If I'm going to work, I mean, how much, how long can I walk in a suit getting to the bus, right? I mean, a quarter of a mile? I'm not going to go five miles, okay? But if I had a vehicle that I could get in and it was something that could get me to transit, would I be more likely to do it? And the answer is probably yes. So, flexible fleets talk about all sorts of alternative forms. You've seen a lot of them in the terms of scooters and bikes and things like this. These are the alpha version of these technologies. These are going to continue to evolve, and in the future, they will be part of the way that people travel. The next operating system really ties all of this together. And this is where, if I could be assured that I can get from my home to my work, and I had some type of an app that would tell me when I had to leave and where my transfer points would be and what would be the most expeditious way to go, and I could minimize my cost or my time, I would be able to optimize my travel behavior. In addition to that, the next operating system ties together all of the data that is coming in from all the various vehicles, all of the different stoplights, for instance, to optimize the entire system, which needs to work as a whole. So, here's why transit doesn't work. And this is one of the things at Sandag that we started doing since Hassan got here, and that's to really critically take a look at the data objectively and say, what is going on? So, when we take a look at the map on the right, this shows us what the travel time is from Palomar Airport Road. The green indicates a 15-minute drive time. The yellow indicates a 30-minute drive time. So, if I'm working in Palomar Airport Road and I'm in my automobile, this is where I can live and I can get there within 30 minutes. The map on the right shows you how long it would take in 15 and 30 minutes to, by transit, how far you could go at peak. And you'll see that it's not a very large coverage. And so, what this is essentially showing us is that transit is not a good alternative to the automobile. This is why 98.5% of the people continue to drive by themselves because you just can't get to where you're going in a reasonable amount of time. So, when we take a look at San Marcos, for instance, it's the same thing. If you were working in San Marcos, you could live almost anywhere up here in North County and get there within a half an hour, even under current traffic conditions. However, if you were using public transportation or transit right now, you wouldn't be able to get very far, okay? So, as we look at this data, we're trying to develop a system which would allow people to have a polygon using public transportation or transit that would be similar to the one on the left-hand side, which is driving. Then we would have a true alternative. At that point, people would be able to make a decision whether or not they wanted to drive, and they could get from one place to another in about the same amount of time. And this last one shows Sorrento Valley. So, Sorrento Valley is the largest employment center that we have here in the region. 129,000 people work there. And you can see, even with our largest employment center, there really is no way to get there effectively by transit. So, I'd like to show you just some of the other data that we're using to make these plans as we go forward. And again, nothing has been determined. There's nothing in stone. At this point, what we're doing is we're analyzing the data to try to understand what the problem is. 129,000 people work in that little green area. They create almost 2 million VMT per day, people traveling to and from work, and the average commute length is about 14.8 miles. So, if we want to reduce VMT, we need to come up with a solution. The blue dots represent the employees who work in the Sorrento Valley area. So, one blue dot represents one person. And you can see that they're scattered pretty much throughout the county. That happens because Sorrento Valley is one of our most popular, the highest-paying employment centers. So, people will live everywhere, and they'll do the commute to get to that center. But you'll see also that there are places where there are concentrations of people. So, when we kind of zoom in to Sorrento Valley, question is, where are the people coming from? And how is the current infrastructure being used? So, we're taking a look at the empirical data to understand how our current freeway system or the corridors are being used. When we take a look at 5 South, and we take a look at that at Villa de la Vaya, what we know is that one out of five cars that are on Villa de la Vaya going south are headed to Sorrento Valley. That's their destination. So, when we take a look at the 56, for instance, it's two out of five cars. 38% of the people who are on that freeway are headed to Sorrento Valley. Going over the 52, there's 14% of the people, about one out of eight cars. And then, when we start to look at the 805, you'll see that 34 cars, or 34% of the vehicle traffic there is going to Sorrento Valley. So, the interesting thing here is like you're on the freeway, there's a whole bunch of cars. A third of those are, in this case, are going to Sorrento Valley. And 5 North, nearly half the cars are going to Sorrento Valley. And this is very important because what happens now is we can start to look at this and say, how can we offer an alternative to these people who are all going to the same place? And by getting those people off of the road, what we can do is create capacity for the other people who need to get through Sorrento Valley and go north. So, we have a lot of goods movement that is going through Sorrento Valley. Right now, it's getting stuck in the traffic going to Sorrento Valley. So, how can we take a look at that? So, one thing we take a look at is how far out do you have to go to capture employees? So, within a five-mile radius, we see 20,000 employees. So, those 20,000 employees, we could possibly offer a flexible fleet to them, a different way to get to work rather than being in your own car. 48,000 people work within a 10-mile radius. When we look at the concentration of employees, you'll see there are some areas that have higher concentrations. These dark purple areas represent where half of the people in Sorrento Valley or who work in Sorrento Valley live. So, hold on, I'm having a little problem with the... Are you clicking for me? Can you, one more, please? Thank you. So, what we have here are these dark purple areas, and what you'll notice is there's a tremendous number of people who live around the Balboa Park, downtown, North Park area, who work in Sorrento Valley, and we know that 49% of the traffic going on the 5 is associated with Sorrento Valley and the 805, and this is where the people live. So, maybe there's an alternative here, like some type of high-speed rail where we could create a mobility hub where people could get on a system that would drop them off in Sorrento Valley and then deliver them to their work. So, we're looking at these areas all separately. So, can you click for me? Because this clicker's not working. Thank you. So, what I want to show you is the 78 corridor. So, this brings it a little bit more home in terms of how this would all work together. We know that there are 19 employment centers up here in the 78 corridor. A lot of them are along Palomar Airport Road, but they also go up into Oceanside. 223,000 people work in that particular area. And what you see is that about more than half of them live in the 78 corridor. So, if you could click, that's where 120,000 live. And if you click one more time, please, and then again, you'll see that our current plan, this is the one that we've been carrying forward now for the last couple of years, shows a HOV lane built in each direction on the 78. And what this would allow us to do is to get a little additional capacity, but we know from just, from the latent demand, and we know from how one lane in each direction works, is that the capacity will immediately be used up and really not going to have a tremendous amount of additional throughput. Click, please. What we have here also is the Sprinter. So, the current plan calls for the Sprinter to be double-tracked, okay? So, that's the current plan right now. But when we take a look at the Five Big Moves and we're taking a look at North County, how could we apply these, okay? And this, again, nothing's in stone here, but I want to show you a concept of how you could apply the Five Big Moves. So, if you click again, please, you'll see the complete corridors. Complete corridors would be those shared mobility or the shared backbone that we were talking about, and that's what this yellow represents. If you click again, there would be some type of high-speed transit, for instance, that would get people to where they need to go, especially those people who live in North County, but maybe they work in Sorrento Valley or downtown. If you click again, there would be mobility hubs that would be located in different areas along this corridor that would allow people to pick up the flexible fleet. So, if you click again, you'll see these flexible fleets, which would help you do that last five miles in terms of using a shared vehicle. And by applying the Five Big Moves to the problem that we have up here in North County, for instance, what we might be able to do is offer a larger percentage of the people, let's say 80% of the people, an alternative to driving a single occupancy vehicle. Now, we don't need to get every single person out of their car into a shared fleet. What we need to do is to get the about 10% out because it's that last 10% that are really the ones that are clogging up the roads. The road has a lot of capacity, and then when you add that last 10%, that's what makes everything slow down. So, if we could move those people and give them an alternative, we might be able to solve a lot more problems than just the one that we were looking at. So, if you click again, these are the Five Big Moves, and with that, I'll call Hassan back up to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ray. So, these are, this is like our story for now. We're sticking by it as staff. The board has not approved. The schedule is in November, we'll come back to the board with the framework of the system. This is a vision, it's going to become a plan as we move forward, with some initial cost, estimates of what would it cost, and some initial estimation of the benefit. And between November and the summer, we will be evaluating this through the tools available, and then we'll come back for public release to the board of the plan. So, with that, we'll stop, and Ray and I will be happy to take any questions.
Councilmember Contreras.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I represent District 1, and transit in that area is extremely important. We have a lot of people, you know, walking, biking, and taking the Sprinter, connecting up to the bus. One of my big concerns is that we're building so dense, right, in these transit-oriented corridors, but the transit is not there. And so, if we don't move forward with building the transit, then we're going to be stuck in an even bigger mess in cities just like this across San Diego County, where, you know, increased amount of individuals living here means more congestion. So, we definitely need to be able to move our population around. It's good for the economy. It's good for the local economy for us to be able to bring people in from other places of San Diego County to enjoy our amazing microbrews and the amazing climate we have here in Vista. Maybe they go and visit the Alta Vista Gardens. But I know that there's a lot of concern from the taxpayers because, you know, in this 2004 renewal of Transnet, there were specific items that were promised, and it doesn't seem like there's enough funding to bring to fruition that plan that was voted on. I have a specific question. Now, we know that the 2004 proposal doesn't meet greenhouse gas emission reduction targets. Some of the talk that's been going on in regards to keeping to the 2004 promise that was made to taxpayers is that we've traditionally received about $3 per $1 in matching funds. My question is, if the plan that we have before us right now doesn't meet those greenhouse gas emission targets, will we be receiving matching funds, or is that out of the question?
As I said in the beginning, council member, if we do not have a plan that meets the requirement, not only we're not going, we'll receive zero from either the federal or state, we won't even be able to build projects with our own money. That's according to the federal and state law right now. So, no, we won't be receiving. But I do want to address the issue you mentioned about the 2004. There is a list of projects, 14 projects, that haven't started. And yes, they were in the original Transnet ordinance. As I showed you in the beginning, and I'm sorry, I think it's fair to say that our board was over-promised. I think San Diegans were over-promised with that money could buy you. The bottom line is, there is not anywhere near the amount of money needed right now in the Transnet to build these projects, period.
Even if we somehow receive matching funds with the
Even if we somehow receive matching funds with the plan?
Doesn't matter. Even you receive, there is about $16 billion, $15.6 billion short. That's a lot of money. That's as much as TransNet generated in $2,002. So any talk about we're not fulfilling the promise of the voter is not fair, because there isn't enough money in the program. And it's not the fault of people. People were talking about bigger numbers, but unfortunately, the owners' truth is, that program is not going to generate anywhere near, actually, it's going to generate less than half of what was promised. So that's one. Look, I don't want this, and I tell this to my board, I don't want this to be, let us do something because we're scared of if we don't meet, even though the penalties are great. I believe we have a chance to chart a future for San Diego where people have choices, real choices. Now, you mentioned the Sprinter. Look, the Sprinter have about 8,000 riders a day, but the Sprinter is, half of it is single-track.
It's very slow.
All-technology, very slow. I don't, with all due respect, and I love my colleagues in North County Transit, but I would not want to call this a commuter rail system. A commuter rail system goes 80 miles per hour. You have an option to run express trains and stop more frequent. If I don't make the Sprinter go through the employment center that is misses right now, and it's more convenient than the car, nobody's going to take it still. And for that, it's going to cost a lot of money, yes, and it's not there. So let's not judge transit by what it is today, but what could be.
I have a few more questions. When we're looking at mobility hubs, I almost feel like that's necessary right now, just here in the city of Vista. It takes some of my constituents two hours just to go to the bank, to and fro, using, you know, our bus system. So I could see a huge improvement in people being able to move about Vista, which is like 18 square miles, a lot faster than they are right now. So I am in favor completely of mobility hubs, the sooner the better, because we have, you know, a lot of people that are using active transportation. I think, you know, instead of honoring the job that they're doing of reducing greenhouse gas emissions, we put no value on their daily activities. So I think, you know, something like a mobility hub, I would like to see that sooner rather than later, because some of these, it's really great to have a big plan like this. It's really important, and then we can work backwards. But some of them are going to take a long time, whereas a mobility hub, we could probably get that together a little bit faster. So I just have a comment on that. But I wanted to address one point on, in this North County picture, that's not being connected, and that's the 76. Are there, is there any discussion as to how we're going to connect the 76 to, make it a complete corridor? You know, I worked in Escondido for a good amount of time, and almost all my colleagues worked in, or lived in Temecula, and it would take them forever to go back and forth. So, and I see a lot of blue dots around there. So I'm just curious as to, you know, when are we going to start discussing the 76 and adding that to this complete corridor vision?
So all of the corridors are being taken a look at. The example I gave was just the 78 compared to what, you know, we could do, adding the five big moves. But when we take a look at the North County, what we've noticed is that there's a lot of north-south movement that is through the cities also to get to the employment centers. So the data shows us that. So by doing the empirical analysis, we know every pair of where a person lives and where they work. So we're looking at that, and the 76 will be an integral part of the overall solution that we propose when this is finished. So this is all being looked at at the same time.
That's really good to hear, because, you know, whether it's anecdotal or empirically illustrated, we here in Vista suffer from a lot of cut-through traffic. And we need to reduce that, because it seems like every month we're hearing of another pedestrian and vehicle collision, you know? So definitely, I'm excited to hear about connecting the 76 to this bigger vision, because it is a problem and it affects us directly here in the city. Outside of that, I could go on forever asking questions, so I'm probably going to stop at this point. But thank you so much. I really appreciate you coming to Vista, and I know that there's a big appetite here to figure out solutions for our traffic congestion. So thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see any questions from my council at this point unless, but I also have a bunch of speakers that want to, so I don't know if you want to ask the questions first from them, as long as they're standing here? Okay. Deputy Mayor Franklin?
We're going to have the speakers first.
So you want to sit down and review the speakers?
Sure, no problem.
Okay, we'll do that, and then we'll go from there. Okay, because there's a lot of speakers, I'm going to hold the speakers to two minutes tonight. So we'll start with Lisa Wellens, followed by Matt, and I don't have a last name, followed by Katsuyu Fukuyama. And if you'll, the two that I called, if you'll start lining up over here, that will make it quicker for us.
Hi, Lisa Wellens. I'm resident of Vista. Thank you for bringing the Sandag presentation here, and thank you to Executive Director Icarada and Sandag staff for your work on this. What a breath of fresh air, literally, a breath of fresh air. Back in 2008, 2009, after the crash, I met a financial advisor who told me the most difficult part of their job at that time was explaining to their clients that they were going to have to do things differently, that the landscape had changed, the financial landscape had changed, and it was hard for them to accept. And we're in a similar situation right now. More information about climate change, what we must do to address it, and we have greenhouse gas reduction targets that we must meet. We know that freeways aren't the fix we thought they would be. TransNet doesn't have the funds that were projected. The landscape has changed. We're having to reevaluate so we can have something that is sustainable, something that makes our region more livable. Sandag vision gives me hope. We all need to be working towards something with all of those considerations to guide us. We should start with what is the best plan? What is the best we can do and work towards that? So anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Is Matt not here? Oh, okay. Followed by Katsuyu Fukuyama, followed by Nikki Leeds.
I thought Hassan coming up here and saying that he has absolutely no budget whatsoever for his vision was the boldest move of the night. I was watching one of the webinars, and one of the guest speakers just very casually mentioned that the largest taxi company in the world has been investing for years in basically a helicopter-sized taxi that flies peoples to destinations. I just hope like when we're planning to compete against the automobile and that, that we're sort of keeping like these game-changing technologies in mind. I can picture like the river cutting for the new, the second spinner line, and like a flying taxi just goes overhead. Not to mention smaller, hyper-efficient autonomous vehicles. The same company is actually sending fast food to college students at San Diego State. One of these things that a lot of these tech companies kind of mention, it's they want sort of the legality of it, they want the legislation, they're ready for it, the technology is ready for it. And I didn't really hear anything in the presentation about like preparing for that side of things. I think it'd be really forward-thinking for us as a county and perhaps as a state to sort of tackle those issues as soon as possible, because they're going to encourage investment in high-tech transportations. The private sector can do a lot of the work for us by just cutting down the cost of transportation. Thank you.
Thank you. Katsuyu, followed by Nikki Leeds, followed by Meryl Leeds.
Good evening. On May 20th this year, a 16-year-old boy named Carlos Hernandez Basquez from Guatemala died on the border in Texas. He was the fifth Guatemalan child to die in U.S. custody. I'm not here to tell how he became ill and died, but I want to tell you why he traveled more than 1,000 miles, mostly on the foot, to reach the U.S. border in Texas. His parents are farmers, poor, but had been able to sustain themselves on the crops. They grew on the farm. Due to changing climate, rains, stuff, used to fall in the growing season stopped, or it came after the season. Too late. They had nothing to harvest. Most of the Guatemalan farmers now are facing food insecurity and deep in poverty. A number of them became climate change refugees. Carlos decided to come to the U.S. to work and earn some money to help his family. The U.S., this is our country, we are the major contributors on greenhouse gas emission. We are part of the causes for climate change refugees. The emission from the vehicles account for about half of the greenhouse gas emission in San Diego County and in this city.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Nikki Leeds, followed by Meryl Leeds, followed by Linda Friedman.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I would like to thank the Vista Council for agreeing to allow Sandag to present its Five Big Moves presentation to us here tonight. Thank you very much. An epic shift in the paradigm of green mass transit is on the horizon. We don't have a choice, and we must make this transition for the health of the planet and its inhabitants. Originally, I was concerned about the component of the Five Big Moves proposal that deals with how to pay for such an epic transformation. I heard concerns about congestion pricing, also called dynamic pricing. I even expressed my concerns directly to Supervisor Gaspar, and we had a nice dialogue. I wasn't able to attend the supervisor's meeting in person regarding the five big moves, but I was able to listen to the audio file, and I suggest you do too. And after hearing Mr. Icarada explain to Supervisor Gaspar which options would be considered for how to pay for such a bold vision, I am convinced he and his team are more than capable of weighing all considerations necessary to move the proposal to the next phase of investigation. When asked by Ms. Gaspar how Sandag planned on paying for this epic project, and I'm paraphrasing now, Mr. Icarada mentioned assessing a multitude of options to pay for the project. What particularly resonates with me is this approach to think big and bold. We need big, bold thinkers and big, bold ideas to tackle this very big problem. 21st century regional transportation is way overdue, and we have a lot of ground to make up. I would also add that polls show that 80% of millennials said access to public transportation was very important, while 78% said having their workplace near transit is also very important. We can all agree, doing nothing and tying up the conversation indefinitely is not acceptable. Thank you so much for having them here tonight.
Thank you. Meryl Leeds, followed by Linda Friedman, followed by Peola Iliskas.
Good evening. I am going to condense a two-minute and 38-second talk into two minutes. My name is Meryl Leeds, and I am here to voice my support for Sandag's Five Big Moves. Climate disruption has accelerated to the point that its effects are now being experienced everywhere, and none of us are immune anymore. In response, cities, big and small, are moving rapidly and in concert with each other to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in every way possible. Here in San Diego County, where nearly one-half of our emissions are caused by transportation, it is critical that a plan of action be implemented with emphasis on reinventing the paradigm of how we get from point A to point B. With this in mind, the vast majority of cities throughout our region have overwhelmingly embraced Sandag's bold and timely new vision. I, along with most of San Diego County's citizens and leaders, hereby endorse the five big moves, because we understand that, one, this plan addresses the major areas of change required to shift away from the 20th-century automobile-based transit system; two, an endeavor of this magnitude will require significant resources and systematic changes. By virtue of the existential threat being faced, the people of our communities are prepared to share in the financial burden and lifestyle sacrifices required to make it work. Number three, we recognize that devoting transportation resources toward widening freeways will only exacerbate congestion, greenhouse gas emissions, and divert much-needed monies away from other forward-thinking strategies. Clean, number four, clean transportation is inextricably connected with virtually every other aspect of city planning in the area of climate crisis. This is especially the case as it relates to our evolving climate action plan, investigation of community choice energy, and the unbiased adoption of California's SB 1069 Access Free Dwelling Unit Law in such a way that all of Vista's neighborhoods-
Sorry, your time is up.
-have equal access to his provisions. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Linda Friedman, followed by Peola Iliskas, followed by Stephanie Ortiz.
Good evening, Mayor Ritter, council members. My name is Linda Friedman. I wish to take this opportunity to thank the council for responding to requests from the community to hear a presentation by Sandag regarding its deliberation on solving San Diego's looming transportation issues. Since myriad ideas are being considered and nothing is formalized, I beg all the council members to refrain from giving a reflexive negative response to what is still in a research and discovery phase, and instead, keep open minds with eyes focused on what will equitably solve our transportation issues and what will also most benefit all the residents of Vista, especially those who must rely entirely on public transportation. We have to move forward. We have no option. We can't look back. Thank you.
Thank you. Paula? Followed by Stephanie Ortiz, followed by Melissa Campbell.
Hello, good evening. I'm Paola Iliskas with Vista Community Clinic. I'm here on behalf of Poder Popular. Estoy aquí de parte de Poder Popular. Many of Poder Popular members, as you know, are volunteers, are leaders of the community. They are also a lot, a lot of them are residents of Townsite. It is their mission as a group, in a volunteer group, to help and improve the health of their community, and in doing so, they want to prevent other negative health impacts. A lot of the residents in Townsite do experience higher rates of glucose, high blood pressure, and obesity. The reason why I'm talking about this is because these are very preventable diseases, and the county has identified them as being three of the four preventable diseases in San Diego County. And one of the ways to prevent that is through physical activity. Many of the Poder Popular group members, they have identified that walking around their neighborhood and getting to transit, getting to places that are even two miles away is a very dangerous experience, and they want to see more public transit, that they can go to their clinic, that they can go to the bank, that they can go to the pharmacy. So, and that being said, just considering the health of residents and also preventative measures. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Stephanie Ortiz, followed by Melissa Campbell.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Stephanie, and today I'm representing both Poder Popular and Vista Community Clinic. I wanted to speak a little bit about transportation and connectivity and how it relates to sustainability issues. So we know that in the Vista community, these two topics are also interconnected with sustainability in the way that it impacts disproportionately different communities, especially ones that are economically vulnerable. So we want to make sure that that is also a component that's being considered as we're moving forward and thinking about mobility and transportation choices in the county of San Diego. We also want to point to the fact that there are very real health consequences, as mentioned by Paola. In addition to that, asthma is one of the highest consequences of, you know, one of the diseases that is a cause of gas emissions, and that's caused by lack of different transportation or options, walkability options. So we just want to make sure that we're taking these points into account and considering the residents of Vista as we move forward with this conversation. So thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Campbell, followed by Diane Nygaard, followed by Cliff Kaiser.
My name is Melissa Campbell. I'm a Vista resident, and I have two questions and two comments about this plan. I do have a tentative support for this plan, but one of my questions for you is just going off of Councilmember Contreras's point about the 76 and certain areas- off of Councilmember Contreras' point about the 76 and certain areas.
Could you just speak to us, and then we'll write down the question?
Okay. In areas in the 76, I'm just wondering how the plan will really reach out to people in those areas, just because it is a lower economic area, and people do have to travel out from those areas to Sorento Valley. My other question pertains more to jobs, so I just wanted to know for this plan if there is any sort of plan to have North County jobs allocated for people of this region for that particular creation of this plan. And then two comments that I did have is, one, I did go to another presentation in East County where someone did talk about the 5G towers in relation to some of the transportation that will be driving itself and the electric transportation. So, myself and other people have had concerns about 5G towers, some of the potential issues, health issues that could be raised because of it. So, I do want to know a little bit more about what that looks like, how many there would be if they are in our area, and the health complications in relation to that. And then my last question or comment is that as a millennial and as a younger person, as a person of color, and as someone who identifies as lower income, I do want to have something that will allow me to be able to take part in being more sustainable in my community. So, I did bring up some of these concerns, and that's why I said it was a tentative support, but I do think we need to move forward, and we do need something that allows our generation to be able to be more sustainable and allows our children's generations and the future generations to be able to take care of the earth.
Thank you. Your time's up. Diane Nygaard, followed by Cliff Kaiser, followed by John Batroff.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Diane Nygaard, representing Preserve Calavera, North County Conservation Group, with 4,200 North County family members. Our regional transportation plan has failed all of us. We've seen increasing traffic, air pollution, greenhouse gases. We're very excited to see this new approach, one that really will achieve reduction in greenhouse gases, gives people real transportation choices, and can be built within available funds, not overpromising what can be delivered, but actually delivering what we can all afford and commit to pay for. Details matter. Of course, we all want them to do the best possible plan they can do, bring it back, and all of us thoroughly work through those details. We don't have them yet. There will be a time that we all have, and we'll want to engage at that, but let's let them do their job and come back with the best possible plan. And I want to leave you with one last thought, and that is that if we have not learned anything in the last few years in this country, we should have learned we cannot solve our transportation problem by paving more of paradise, wider and bigger and more roads. All we will end up with is less paradise. Thank you.
Thank you. Cliff Kaiser, followed by John Batroff.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Just a couple of comments. The alternative to single occupancy vehicles, what I heard here was basically more mass transit, and we've seen over the years, just like Ms. Nygaard just mentioned, that more paving doesn't work, more mass transit doesn't work either, whatever you name it, mobility center, little mini-bus, or whatever it is. You know, one thing that would work, and we've had the fast-track lane on Interstate 15 for years now, they don't even open it up to three lanes in the evening commute back, right? If you opened up that third lane, you'd be saving a lot of time, a lot of money, a lot of headache, but they don't do it. Why? I don't know. Some simple things that can be solved today, and they just ignore it. Who wants the Sprinter to have more stops? The 8,000 people that use the Sprinter in a given whatever timeframe, it probably affects 8,000 or 16,000 people that are slowed down by every Sprinter stop when it has to, the Sprinter has to go across the road that I want a transit. Again, mobility center is just another name for a transit center. They just want more of them, and that's not going to solve the problem. One gentleman said that the community is ready to take the financial sacrifice and something like degradation of lifestyle, not me, and I don't think any of the people that I know want to take more financial sacrifices and a degradation in lifestyle based on bureaucratic spending. So, he also, somebody also said, "Let's keep this positive," so this no-negative comment. I would ask you guys to positively endorse Sandeg to go to the beach and pack sand with this plan.
Okay, John. Our last speaker. Oh, nope.
One more. My name is John Batroff with Cleaneth for Kids, and I wanted to voice my support and our support for the Sandeg plan. As Diane said, there's a lot more details to be worked out, but I've lived in a lot of cities. I've lived in Washington, D.C., San Francisco, I've lived in Miami and Dallas, and adding lanes doesn't fix anything. Gridlock always continues. It always grows. It's a never-ending battle, and at some point, there's just no more space left for paving and lanes. The only way to stop it is to get people out of their cars. I personally work in Irvine, so today I took my train to Irvine, took the train back, and then took the Sprinter over here, and it works. It's a little more inconvenient, but it works. It's absolutely a better way of doing it, and all we need to do is get more stops, particularly that last leg, which the Sandeg plan is going to address. There's definitely a way to do it, and the best way to do it is not to add more lanes. We got to get away from that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Joe? Joe's our last speaker, I think.
Okay. Thank you. We don't need more lanes. That's clear. I'm concerned that in Dallas, when they built a mass transit, rapid transit system, ridership compared to buses went down at the cost of billions of dollars. The reason? When you get off at a stop, there was nothing there. If you go to the UC San Marcos stop on Sprinter and you get off, there's nothing there. I believe we need to build 20-minute communities. Everything we need to do in terms of living, walking, and shopping should be within 20 minutes access. The way to do that is to have high-density housing hubbed at the transit stops. How does it help to get more people into one place, Sorento Valley or whatever, to work? We really need to expand the workspaces and reorganize the way we fix our communities, the way we live in our communities. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that concludes all of our speakers. So, Deputy Mayor Franklin, do you want to?
Yeah, I just want to thank you for coming to share your vision with us. You know, I rode public transportation, two buses and a train, for about three years of my life. I know it works. Also know that we have a lot of challenges ahead of us to make it more functional in our region. I support the vision. My concern is, you know, the devil is in the details, and we've got to figure out how to pay for it, and we've got to figure out what we have to cut in order to pay for it. And so, in response to the resident who asked us not to prejudge it, well, because we don't have the details yet, of course, we can't prejudge it. You know, I would ask Sandeg to deal honestly with voters, not you, Mr. Icarata, but past leaders of Sandeg have not. It was obvious when Sandeg representatives came to us and said that we would see 30% year-over-year growth in sales tax revenues. You know, I thought that was absurd at its face, and I said so at the time, and I couldn't believe I was the only one that saw that. You know, we have to be realistic in our projections of revenues, but, you know, I want to point out, too, the fact that SR-78 ends in a stoplight at I-5. That's an outrage. It's a total outrage. It's got to be fixed. And I just don't want us to take our eye off the ball. There are important roadway infrastructure projects that the people who have elected us to this council expect us to play a hand in fixing. You know, and I will tell you that we in North County often feel like we're the redheaded stepchild of the region because we're not part of the voting majority bloc on Sandeg, and so we don't necessarily feel that our needs are met with the same level of seriousness that maybe the more central areas of the region are. So, I know you'll help us address those concerns and make us feel that North County is getting its fair share. All we ask is a proportional return of that which we invest in the region. And then, this comment's not relevant to Sandeg or the region at all, but more relevant to the state of California. We are the highest taxed state in the country at 13.3% at our terminal tax rate. Where did the money go? When are we going to wake up and ask our state representatives and our state senators and our governor what they have done with our tax dollars? Because the good Lord knows they didn't build the roadway infrastructure that they promised us. They haven't invested in mass transit. They haven't invested in autonomous vehicle technology. We really don't know, most of us, how our state dollars have been so misused to leave us without the kinds of infrastructure that so many other states have wisely invested in while we pay more per capita than most other states in the Union. So, I think part of what's incumbent upon us as a city and us as a region is to demand better investment and more of our tax dollars back. I mean, the very idea that we'd have to pass a local tax like Transnet to beg for a match, to me, you know, is we're California taxpayers. We should get some of that money that we put in, and it should be proportionate to the amount of money that we sent to Sacramento from our region. Instead, we have to raise ever greater taxes all the time. One of the other things I think that we have to look at is we have to make sure that the infrastructure that we build has a lifespan that's greater than the debt service required to pay for it. It's of great concern that some of the things that we've built in the past don't have a 40-year life, but they had a 40-year debt service cycle. I think that's irresponsible to future generations, and we have to make sure that we're fiscally responsible in the way that we pay for these things. I like the Figure Eight concept. I drive downtown at least a couple of times a week, and I would love nothing more than to be able to get onto a train that would take me downtown within an hour. I'd even, you know, I'd spend an extra 15 minutes. It'd be great. Be happy to do it. I will repeat, I was unhappy with the $800,000 investment in the Carlsbad Connector project because, as I've said several times, and no one's bothered to correct me if I'm so grievously mistaken, that we could have, for $300,000, paid for the same number of targeted individuals to have an Uber fare, and had we used Uber Pool, the cost would have gone from $10.24 down to about $8.50, so we could have achieved the goal of elimination of single-vehicle, of single occupancy trips, and achieved a much better cost outcome there, and we could have expanded. And I'll reemphasize, too, that I believe that autonomous electric vehicles are the future. I think they will do far more to alleviate congestion, because remember, you're talking about within 30 years, taking 10%. Was that roughly accurate? We have grown in the state of California and in the city of Vista and in San Diego County. We've grown 1% every year for the last 30 years, and there's no reason to believe that that won't continue. So, in the next 30 years, we're going to have a 30% increase in population. So, I think it's a fair question to ask, you know, and obviously, we've got to do, we've got to do these investments in mass transit, but how far behind are we, and what's that going to look like compared to the population growth that we're going to see? You know, I think smart development, where we build greater density for people that want greater density, for shopping centers and work centers and residential centers all built in the same place. I've seen those developments. There's, you know, there's some that are new in San Diego, and there's a lot that are old on the East Coast and other parts of the country. They're great. We should do more of those. We should incentivize and encourage developers to build those kind of communities. But at the same time, people should have the right to a suburban lifestyle. I represent an entire community of suburban dwellers, and those people chose the community that they're in and the neighborhoods they're in because they want a suburban life. And, you know, I think, you know, my job as a representative of those people is to protect their way of life. So, you know, I encourage you to find a way to fulfill promises that are made to taxpayers. We have to keep promises that we make as public officials, and if ever we need a redo on our promises, then we have to go back to the same people who approved those plans, and we have to ask them for their permission because they're the ones that granted it. So, again, thank you for being here. I appreciate your vision, and I hope that we can work together to find a productive way to pay for it.
Thank you. Just one comment, council member, and maybe you still don't know me. I look at this county as one county, and nothing, no region is more important than the other. That's how I approach it. That Figure Eight says we need to connect the county, not one city, not the central, whether you're in the South County, in the East County, North Coast, or North Island, or the city of San Diego. The way we approach it at the staff level is one county, we need to connect it. And I just want you to hold me to that and hold my team to that. We never, ever think that, "Let us take care of this urban area and not that area." Let's not forget the 76. But I also want you to know that you're right. I mean, there is, this is going to cost money, money, resources that we don't have, but you said something, if I could, we could provide you a system that gets you to downtown within an hour. We want to provide you a system that gets you there less than if you drive your car in the peak. And short of that specification, we shouldn't waste our time and money. So, we are hoping for a system that makes sense. Your example about spending $800,000, there's a lot of things that doesn't make sense in our system today. We want to change it. But you should always expect an honest answer, a direct answer, and nothing under the table. Everything is above the table. That's why I get into trouble with my board members, because I don't, I don't believe people need, I don't, at least in my job, I don't need to be political. I need to, don't need to count votes. My team and I's job is to give you ideas. At the end of the day, the board is going to decide whether that's good or bad for the region.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My colleague, the deputy mayor, hit all my points as well. I couldn't agree with him more. I appreciate very much that you came out, that you drove all the way up the 15 and across the 78. Not an easy thing to do. I won't ask what time you had to leave San Diego to get here, by 5:30, but we appreciate very much you coming up and talking about this with our constituency. But I do agree with the deputy mayor that, as a government person myself, sitting here on the dais as an elected official, I am one of the least trusting people of government that you will ever find, because we have had promises made to us that were broken, and Transnet's only one example of a long line as a taxpayer of promises made and promises broken, tax money just disappearing into a black hole somewhere that never, never to be seen again. This is a big, bold vision. This is going to take a lot of money, so I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about the cost of it with the cost-benefit ratio for the number of people that even you have said perhaps 10% of the population would benefit from this. 90% of the population will not benefit from this. So, for that cost-ratio benefit, that's a concern for me, and how are we going to raise that money? So, again, to reiterate what the deputy mayor said, those are my concerns, and I understand that, as you said when in your opening, this is a vision with no detail. This is just a plan. Nothing is determined, and nothing is written in stone, and so I understand that. So, I look forward to what the plan develops into that we will be presented at the board meeting and to the people of our communities. But as a representative of the people of Vista and in my district and the city as a whole, I'm going to keep a very, very watchful eye on the cost and how is this going to benefit North County and Vista, because as has been said, we have been ignored up here a lot over the years. So, I thank you very, very much, and we'll see you at the next board meeting.
I want to just clarify one thing, and I appreciate your service at Sandeg Board, you and the Mayor, Mayor Ritter. Clarify one thing about the 10% and 90%. I think what, Andrea, correct me if I'm wrong here, the 10, we hope, we don't think everyone is going to leave their car in the garages, but if we shift 10% to transit, we're also benefiting the 90% on the highway. So, I think everybody wins, not just the 10%, but we want to shift... So, I think everybody wins, not just the 10%, but we want to shift. So, I think we don't have the data here, but he has data, and I believe him. I trust him. He has data where it actually shows that in the most congested highways, like the 78 or the 52, most of the congestion is caused by the last 5% to 10% of vehicle entering. So, if I take 5% to 10% of the road, by choice, we live in a democracy. We can't force people, you know, but by choice, if we get them to another, we created a lot of capacity for the 90%. So, I just want to make sure that that's the comment.
Right, and we've talked about that offline and at the board meeting. So, I understand that, and that's very logical. But as you also said, and also, if you create capacity, you are going to create the traffic. And if you build it, they will come. And I know that we had the discussion at the last board meeting, that part of, part of the issue isn't just...
Understood.
Yeah, but we're also bringing in another 700,000 people into the county. So, it isn't just the people that we have here, it's the people that we're bringing into the county that we're also looking at. So, there are a lot of nuances with this whole thing, and that's understood, I think, by everyone in this room. But there are still some very real concerns that even though this is something that we do need, transportation is paramount to our community, to our society. We still have to move people around. We need to move goods around. We need to move services around. And right now, it's not an efficient way of doing it. And no offense, it's not an efficient way to do it. And so, until we can hear a better way of doing it and a more efficient way of doing it, you're going to have a very hard time getting a lot of people out of their cars. I've got two grown children. One loves transit and doesn't drive a car, and my other one will never ride transit. So, you know, you have, we all have barriers to why people are stuck where they are as far as cars versus transit. So, I understand all of the nuances with all of this. And like I said, I'm anxiously awaiting to see how this evolves, because it's obvious we have to do something different. It's not that we just need to do something. We need to do something right. And we haven't had a history of right yet, so I'm hoping that we do this right. And that's what I'm just saying, cautiously optimistic, and we'll be watching. So, thank you.
I would like to thank you also for coming up here and presenting that. I know you probably wouldn't believe this, but I do support your vision, because I come to Sandag, and I'm not always supportive. If you could get me on a train and get me to San Diego in an hour, I'm off for that because I don't like driving down there. But I'm also very financially conservative, and so I haven't, I haven't seen the plan and how we're going to finance it. And I do have a problem with the congestion pricing, which I think you're calling it dynamic pricing now, but I have, I don't mind it on the freeways when you have a choice to get in and be charged, but I don't want to see it in our cities. And I, you know, I just have a problem with that, and I'm waiting to see how that's going to come forward. But I really have a problem with congestion pricing on that. And I also have a problem with the Transnet, and because we made a promise to the voters when they voted that, and I have a problem with transferring money when we made a promise. And so, the 78 is, if, I mean, if this plan takes 10 years or 20 years, the 78 is going to be a parking lot. And so, I just, I just feel like we need some help there. And so, that, you know, if you can help us and that, and I know that that was one of the four, four projects that we, in the last motion that we made, that went along with prioritizing that and your bold moves. So, I'm going to hope that goes forward. And other than that, I'm, I just thank you both for coming up here, and I hope your drive home is better than your drive here when you go through San Marcos. Okay, with that, we'll go back to my agenda here. That's our last presentation. The following, recommendations are on the following consent calendar, will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. And any member of the public may remove an item by submitting a request to speak card to the clerk's secretary. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following adoption of the calendar, and we have 14 consent items this evening. Okay, the public has pulled C5 and C6. And then, do we have, Councilmember, Deputy Mayor, did you pull something?
No, I would like to move the balance of the consent agenda.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
Second, then.
Okay, the motion in a second. Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. So, with that, we're going to go to item C5, which are, is that by the public's? Amendments to the City Council Policies. Does, do you want to need a report on that?
This was pulled by a member of the public. Would you like to hear from a member of the public, or would you like a report?
Yep, let's hear from the member of the public. Matt. Hi, Matt.
Thank you, Mayor. We were thinking alike. I just wanted to hear a brief sort of report about what's going on, and maybe, just out of curiosity, the method of discretion of these records.
Okay. So, do you want to make a motion on that now, or do you want to?
I think, didn't Matt just ask for the staff report?
Oh, you want a staff report? I'm sorry.
I asked for a staff report, too.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Can we have a staff report from Kathy Valdez? No, from Claire.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. The item before you is the Amendment of City Council Policies 100-11 and 100-17. City Council Policy 100-11 governs the city's authority to receive, create, retain, and dispose of official public records. A change is being proposed to clarify that paper records are not required to be kept once archived in a trustworthy system such as Laserfish. A change is also being proposed to submit a list of destruction inventory to department directors annually rather than quarterly. City Council Policy 100-17, Travel and Training Authorization and Expense Reporting Policy for City Council Members. Section 5, Event Absences, addresses absences from events, meetings, conference, dinners, or functions that are paid for by the city during a calendar year. Staff recommends replacing the word "calendar" with the word "fiscal" to align with the city's budget years. That completes my report. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Matt, did you, you have a question? No, he doesn't have a question.
Madam Mayor.
Deputy Mayor, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the item. In summary, we're going to get rid of a lot of paper that is duplicate records of things that are already on our public microfiche system that you can access through the World Wide Web. I'm a big believer in going paperless. I've been operating in a paperless office environment and recycling all paper immediately after a scanning for about 20 years now. I don't keep any paper. It's archaic, and it's wasteful, and I don't like it. So, I'm a big believer in this. This is just about technology moving forward. It's not about eliminating records to, you know, we're retaining everything longer than ever now. In fact, everything's being retained forever, basically. So, it's not, it's not a sunlight issue, it's just a technology issue. And then, on the second issue, the staff made a recommendation that it would be somehow easier for them to keep track of the accounting, to realign the, to our fiscal year instead of a calendar year, a certain policy, which has no functional difference for the council. So, if everybody else has the same understanding that I do, then I would make a motion to approve this item.
I'll second it. Nice synopsis there, Deputy Mayor. Please cast your votes on that. Motion passes unanimously. With that, we will go on to item C6, which are the amendments to the municipal municipal code, Chapter 9.32, the social host ordinance. I have three speakers. Do you want a report on it? Anybody? Nobody's sticking their heads in here.
I don't.
Okay, we'll do the speakers, and then we'll see if they have any questions. Okay, we'll start with Craig Reed, followed by Erica Leary, followed by Becky Rapp.
Good evening. My name is Craig Reed. I'm the director of the Ben Gender-Aid Drinking Initiative for the Institute for Public Strategies, and we have a strong interest in social host. It's one of the best practices that is municipal, every municipality within San Diego County, including the county itself, has a social host ordinance. So, we're excited to see that there's going to be some updates to your ordinance, specifically for, I'm interested in subsection B. When you adopted your original one, there was a few court cases between that timeframe and today that clarified some of the needs, inclusion that need to be in a good social host ordinance. And so, these help clarify the expectations of when there is a house party, what the duties of the host are, and we really appreciate those being in there. This allows for law enforcement to wisely use this ordinance as needed. And you're now, right now, you're one of four that do not have these, what we call duties to inspect. So, congratulations that, with this vote, that you'll, it will be down to three, and I'll make my job a little easier. And I appreciate your time, and thank you for your support.
Thank you. Erica Leary, followed by Becky Rapp.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Erica Leary. I'm the program manager for the North Coastal Prevention Coalition, whose mission is to reduce the harm of alcohol, tobacco, marijuana, and other drugs in the cities of Carlsbad, Oceanside, and Vista through community action, education, support, and collaboration. I'll just take a minute of your time, commending you to revisit the social host ordinance, as many cities in the county have done in recent months. As a prevention advocate, this serves as a tool, it helps law enforcement and prevention folks help us explain the dangers of underage drinking and drug use and the potential consequences to the public and hold party hosts responsible. NCPC believes that the social host ordinance can be one part of a comprehensive set of local policies to prevent youth access to alcohol, tobacco, marijuana, and other drugs, and help us prevent harms to youth with these substances. Thank you.
Thank you. Becky Rapp?
Good evening, City Councilmen. My name is Becky Rapp. I am a concerned parent, as I have six children, three of whom are teenagers. I would like to first thank you and the staff for the recommendations on amending the social host ordinance to include marijuana specifically. Hopefully, this addition of marijuana will counter the messages of normalization that are everywhere we turn. Our youth are bombarded with advertising and messages telling them it is safe to use. It causes me great concern that marijuana is becoming a household product. The city of San Diego has approved 36 marijuana dispensaries and 40 MPFs, many of them along the 15 corridor. Among other cities, Vista alone has approved 11 outlets, and Chula Vista has an unlimited number. This plethora of pot availability is combining, is combining to make San Diego County a serious pot capital, with unanticipated sideline activities, including pot party buses, pot tour buses, billboards, and print advertising enticing youth to try high potency edibles and vaping extracts. Experts say there is a pot vaping epidemic among teens now. Further, the state has passed legislation allowing deliveries from any outside jurisdiction to all localities, and random checks show delivery agents are not hesitant to ignore laws and deliver to underage youth. This situation presents incredible challenges to parents and teens. This week, my husband and son, along with volunteers and 20 other young adults, are working hard at San Pascual Academy, a county-run high school for foster children, to provide service. The students at San Pascual Academy have been in the foster system much of their lives and are now residing at San Pascual Academy. Sadly, 100% of these youth came from homes where there were drugs. Alcohol and marijuana were all present. It's time we recognize the role that marijuana use plays in bringing teens into the foster system, and hopefully, those teens are also receiving good marijuana prevention education. I believe this amendment is a step forward in creating better parent.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, with that, Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say thank you to our speakers speaking to this. It is an important issue, not just the availability and the accessibility of drugs and alcohol to everybody, especially our youth, but also holding adults accountable for what happens in their homes. We've seen too many times play out on the television news where a party at somebody's house has gone wrong, and people have been injured or killed, and parents seem oblivious to what's happening in their own home. So, I appreciate this social host amendment for our ordinance, and with that, I would move that we approve C6 as presented.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. The next thing, we have one public hearing. Next thing on our agenda is our public hearing. This is a public hearing to receive testimony regarding development code amendments for accessory dwelling units. And the public hearing is now open. Community Development and Engineering Director John Conley will provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a continued public hearing from June 25th. Much of the information in the presentation is repeated from what was presented on the 25th. I'll speed through it here for the council's memory. We started this back in February at the request of Councilman Green to discuss accessory dwelling units. Staff was directed to return for formal direction related to the zoning codes and development impact fees applicable to ADUs. The council gave formal direction on April 9 to address maximum unit size and development impact fee waivers for affordable units, which are included in the proposal. We held a public hearing on June 25th, and the item was tabled to provide more information on the R1B zone, which is our small lot, single-family residential zone, and so, we're here tonight to present on that. Just to recap, the maximum unit size right now is determined based on zoning and lot size. An ADU may not exceed the size of a primary residence, and the size of an ADU for a detached structure depends on the zoning and the size of the lot. As presented here, it can be anywhere from 650 to 1,000 square feet under our current rules. The state permits a maximum of 1,200 square feet for ADUs, and so, the staff presentation tonight is recommending that we change our allowance for maximum size for a detached unit to 1,200 square feet in the, what we call permissible zones, which is where they're already permitted. That's the R1, E1, A1, and OR zones. And for an attached unit, it would be 50% of the size of the main unit or 1,200 square feet, whichever is less. An ADU may still not exceed the size of the primary residence. With respect to development impact fees, the current development impact fees per unit are about $15,000. They've slightly gone up since the last presentation because we increased our fees in July. Per the city council's direction, the staff is proposing to amend the development impact fee requirements as follows. All impact fees will be waived for affordable units. An affordable household is defined as 80% of the annual median income in the county based on the size of the household. This would require an affordable covenant for a 10-year period, as recommended by the Housing Division, and it would allow the unit to count towards Vista's regional housing needs assessment, which is the state's obligation to provide affordable housing. A caregiver that lives in the accessory unit may also qualify for a fee waiver with appropriate medical documentation. If you do not meet these requirements for an affordable unit or a caregiver, full development impact fees would apply, as shown on the previous slide. This fee waiver proposal is proposed for a period of five years or the first 100 ADUs that we permit from the time of adoption. With respect to the R1B zone, the city council discussed the inclusion, or the possible inclusion, of the R1B zone at the last two meetings where we discussed this issue, and requested additional information from staff. As I mentioned, the R1B zone is the city's smallest single-family residential zone with a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet. Setbacks are 20 feet in the front, 5 on the sides, and 10 in the rear, and there is a 60% lot coverage standard, meaning you cannot develop or cover more than 60% of the lot. Any ADU within the R1B zone, if permitted, would be required to meet these development standards. I've included a map in the staff report, which shows the areas where the R1B zone is located. That's the orange shown on the map here. The purple are what we call the permissive zones, or in other words, the zones where accessory units are already permitted. There are some specific plan areas in the south area of the city, which are shown with a colored outline. Those may be excluded at the council's direction. Most of the southernly portion of the city is included within a master homeowners association that restricts the development of accessory dwelling units. The state's rules do not supersede. Those HOA rules still apply, but there is pending legislation at the state level that would supersede that restriction. The Planning Commission reviewed this proposal back in June and recommended approval, and with that, the staff is recommending approval and amendment to Chapter 1831 related to minimum unit size and development impact fees for accessory dwelling units. We're looking for some direction from the city council on the R1B zone, and we do have a proposed amendment to the ordinance that was provided via memo dated August 8, which clarifies some parking requirements. clarifies some parking requirements. That completes my staff report, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I have three speakers. You want to hear speakers first? Okay, Mary Birmingham is our first speaker, followed by Joe Frishman, and followed by Diana Riley.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Mary Birmingham, and I live in this community in Vista. And I just have a quick question, and that would be, what are the impacts on taxes? Like, if you put a dwelling, this accessory dwelling, are you impacted on the whole structure being reassessed, or is it only on the additional structure, the building that you are, you know, the addition?
Oh, that was your one question?
That's it.
Do you have a name?
The county assessor can reassess your property based on the addition of an accessory dwelling unit, and that can trigger a reassessment of the full property. Typically, the assessment only takes into account the improvements that were added with the building permit, but if it's been a long period of time since the property was assessed, it could affect your overall assessment.
Okay. Thanks, Mary. Joe Frishman, followed by Diana Riley.
Hi, I'm glad to be able to speak here today. Several years ago, almost, I addressed a water problem that I was having at Green Valley Vista Park there, and it has not been addressed, it has not been dealt with. I've been ignored, essentially. And according to California Code of Regulations and so forth, the park owners are responsible for the drainage in the areas of that park. I was asked at a meeting that we had at that time to take additional pictures when it rained and so forth, because the initial problem was caused by an irrigation problem of a neighbor. So, I did so, and I've done so, and I have a great deal of documentation, both photographically and written and so forth. I just have a great deal of it, and I would like to see this problem taken care of. I've had some ongoing health issues, my wife has, since we've had the water intrusion under the house and so forth. I can get doctors' confirmation on that and so forth. It's just, when I brought this up, and the thing that makes me angry about it is, is that they want to put in new units, and they don't take care of the people who are in the existing units. And that's my argument right then and there, essentially. And I just need to have something done, somebody needs to do something. I feel nervous with the management of this group and so forth, because they don't respond, not the park management, but the property management. And other people in the park also know my problem. I've also documented it to the point where I know that there are other properties affected by this water problem, and I have those pictures and documentation on those also. So, whenever anybody would like to come and discuss this problem with me and find a resolution to it, I would really appreciate it very much.
Mayor, if I may, Mr. Frishman, if you'd like to hold on until after the meeting, we can talk to you about your issue and go from there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Diana Riley.
Mayor and Council, I'm Diana Riley, and I am in escrow to obtain a home here in Vista in order to have my 99-year-old mother and my daughter live with me. The fee to put this together would really impact us, because I am on a fixed income as a senior, so I'm hoping that you will do away with it. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all of our speakers, so Deputy Mayor Franklin.
I just wanted to thank my colleagues for agreeing to move this item forward to tonight's meeting. I did have a chance to have my concern about accessory dwelling units and garages addressed. Unfortunately, the answer that I received after study was that in the zones concerned, ADUs are already permitted in garages, and this won't affect that. I had some concern that in certain R1B areas, that we would be promoting accessory dwelling units and garages, but again, just kind of for the record, I've been told that this won't affect, or this won't increase the permission to do that.
That's correct.
Thank you. So, with that, yeah, that was my remaining concern, that, and I would like to move that we exclude the specific, the special plans, the specific plans, rather. I'd like to move that we exempt the Shadow Ridge specific plan, specific plan number 24, and the Vista Business Park specific plan from this proposal. And with that, with those exemptions or exclusions, I would like to move approval of the item.
Councilmember Green.
All right, I love that motion. I would also like to just add that any other R1B zones that are governed by that Shadow Ridge master plan also be removed, in addition to the two specific plans that he regulated. So, if there's any R1B properties that aren't in those specific plans within Shadow Ridge, I'd also like to have those but removed. But I do want to make sure that in the permissible zones, that we do add the additional R1B zone properties in the city of Vista, and with that said, I would second that motion.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just going to reiterate my previous concerns on this project. I understand that some people want to use them for family members, either college kids, I've got a couple of those myself, or aging parents. I have an 82-year-old mom. But at some point, that's going to become an apartment that you're going to rent, and or you sell your home and you do something different, and it becomes another business opportunity for someone, as was discussed by a lot of people who spoke last time we talked about this. So, my concern is with not collecting the impact fees that we have, that we have for a reason in our city. So, not collecting the impact fees is an issue for me, along with so many other reasons for not doing this. I understand it's 100 within five years, and then we're going to revisit it. I just think this is a slippery slope for the city to be going down, and in 10 or 20 years, when citizens are realizing the impact this has, impacts that are not always positive, that I've seen happen in other communities. So, I'm not in favor of this, but I'm also troubled a little bit by my colleagues, who are all in favor of this, except in certain areas of the city. If you like this and you want this for the city, you should not exempt your neighborhoods. Thank you.
Please, clapping was at the beginning of the thing, but not appropriate now. Councilmember Contreras.
I just want to go off of what Councilmember Rigby said. I actually agree with your last point that, you know, I want all property owners to have the same rights, but I understand that it's been kind of a compromise, you know, to get to this point, and I know my constituents in the R1B zone really want to have the opportunity to, you know, get some ADUs on there, and, you know, one of the issues that I hear a lot throughout the city of Vista, people very upset about, you know, that, I'm going to use the term skyscrapers, I know it's not that bad, the skyscraper is going up. So, when we're looking at accessory dwelling units, it's a really amazing way to increase density without reconfiguring the skyline of Vista. So, I just want us to take that into account, because I know it's been really contentious for the public to see a lot of this development go in. We have the capacity to increase more affordable units in a very passive way, where we're letting the free market essentially take care of it. So, I always want to maximize the rights of property owners, and I think this is a beautiful way to do it, but I completely agree with you that I think all property owners should be receiving this benefit, but it has been a compromise to get to this point, and I'm totally okay with that. Maybe in the future, we can revisit that. I don't know if, you know, that's something that the people want, but I know my constituents pretty well. I just, maybe I'm a little red today, because I went walking for a little bit, letting people know about National Senior Day coming up, but I'm sure that, you know, Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Franklin has a good understanding of his constituency, and at this point, you know, it's taken three meetings to get to this compromise, so I am all ready to go. I'm all in favor for it.
Deputy Mayor.
I just wanted to reiterate for clarity, for the record, the motion was to adopt the item with the exclusion of the Shadow Ridge specific plan, specific plan number 24, and the Vista Business Park specific plan. I think there was some concern of whether I included all three of those. You know, I don't know that I heard from any other colleague that they had concerns about neighborhoods that they represent. I certainly would be receptive if there was a...
Nobody in my neighborhood wants to...
Well, I think, I think perhaps there's a way to craft that solution. You know, not having a direct overlay, I'm seeing most of the communities that you represent are already purple, if I'm not, I mean, but I'm open to that. If you have neighborhoods that you think this is not right for, and look, I mean, in neighborhoods that were laid out and built in semi-rural areas, where there was sufficient distance between homes, where people didn't buy into a neighborhood that had a very specific, and I'm not referring to the legal definition of a specific plan, but where the neighborhoods were master-planned and with a coherent feel to the community, and I know that some of those communities exist in your district as well, and they exist in all of our areas, and my concern all along has been that people that purchase a home, the biggest investment of their lifetime, that many of us, I, for one, certainly purchased a home in an area that comes with a lot of covenants and restrictions, because I enjoy those covenants and restrictions, and I enjoy the fact that there's a homogeneous, you know, feeling to the neighborhood, you know, and it protects our quality of life in that area. And I think the people that I represent absolutely expect me to fight, to defend that, so I feel I'm doing my duty to them to do that.
So, we have a motion and a second, right? Okay. And I'll just say that I'm a supporter, but I hope you realize that it actually changes neighborhoods. There's less green space in the neighborhood, there's just more density and more cars parking, and just more people around, so I'm not sure I agree with it, but I, overall, I agree with it, because I know that we need places for seniors and for families and for college kids. I wish I had one at my house, so everybody didn't live with me. Okay, so, you close the public hearing, right? You close the public hearing? And we're all set to vote?
I had one more comment.
Oh, we got more buttons pushed. Okay.
I appreciate the deputy mayor's comment that, you know, you live in Shadow Ridge, which is master-planned and HOA and CCNRs, et cetera. Some of the other communities also were master-planned and built for a certain lifestyle. We also paid a lot of money for our homes to live in a community and a neighborhood that we like, the way it is, and we just happen to be in the yellow zone here. So, I still, because you pay extra fees every month for an HOA, our HOA, our CCNRs, were limited to the building of the homes, and we have some homes, estate homes that they, not me, I bought the subdivision house, but there are others in the development that build their own. They only apply to those homes and the design elements for those homes. I think every neighborhood in Vista, whether it's in Shadow Ridge or outside of Shadow Ridge, North Vista, South Vista, every neighborhood in Vista was built with a vision and a lifestyle, and people bought into that. They paid a lot of money to live here, and I think that selecting places, we're going to do it here, we're going to do it here, we're going to do it here, and you don't get a choice, to me, that's just wrong. And you are impacting neighborhoods, you are impacting quality of life, you are impacting home values. Some of these neighborhoods, if you look at what's happening, and I see it all over this city, some of these homes that are being sold are being bought by companies, and right now, some of them are renting the room, the house is out by rooms. We have two in our neighborhood alone where that's happened, where they, some company bought the house, and now they just rent it out by the room. And if, and you allow companies to come into these neighborhoods, and they're going to build apartments in the backyard, well, you're increasing the density, and I understand that renting a number is, that's a goal, but that's not what these people bought into those neighborhoods for. And with the traffic, the high density, the noise, et cetera, you are reducing home values, in addition to increasing traffic congestion, et cetera. So, I just think every neighborhood, not just Shadow Ridge, but every neighborhood in Vista should be fought for and protected, and I just think this is wrong on every level.
Councilmember Green.
So, I kindly disagree with that, pretty much every aspect of that. I don't feel like being able to add an ADU in your property reduces your property value. If anything, adding property rights to your property and adding square footage to your property adds value to your property, which is why the county assessor would reassess your property after you added an ADU, because it added value to your property. Additionally, if there's any CCNRs in a particular area, conditions, covenants, and restrictions, they have an architectural committee, and if there's any alterations to the exterior of the community that will affect the character of the community, the livability of the community, the architectural community is set to approve it. Even if there is no governing HOA, the CCNRs are still mandated. So, if you live in a community, you understand how your community is going to be protected, what the CCNRs are, what the architectural committee is. If you buy a home that's not in a community governed by a CCNR, you have the ability to do what you want. I'm fighting for my community, and I'm also fighting for Shadow Ridge. I graduated from Rancho Winnebago High School, I know that community very well, and the specific plans throughout Shadow Ridge already say you can't do it. The HOAs say you can't park your car in your driveway overnight in Shadow Ridge, okay? So, I mean, the restrictions in that area are totally different than the restrictions in my neck of the woods and in every other area here. So, they have specific restrictions, specific plans in Shadow Ridge. Deputy Mayor Franklin represents that particular area with those particular restrictions, and it's his job to make sure that those are enforced, because those are the people who are going to elect him. In District 1, District 2, and District 3, we don't have those specific plans, nor do we have that aggressive Shadow Ridge Homeowners Association. If you wanted to live in a Shadow Ridge Homeowners Association, you would move to Shadow Ridge. So, people live off of La Tortuga and off of Breeze Hill, and in some of those areas, without such a strict HOA, because they want to park in their garage, because they want to park on the streets overnight, because it is a different type of way of living. I don't see a crazy R1B zone that I'm changing in District 3 if Councilwoman Rigby had a bunch of constituents' emails or phone calls or letters that say, hey, this particular community really doesn't want you to give us, you know, waive fees on affordable dwelling units or increase the size. I'd love to see it. I haven't been contacted by any of those people in any district other than Shadow Ridge who is concerned. So, I really feel like those comments aren't fair. I fight for my community extremely hard, just like Councilwoman Contreras does, Deputy Mayor Franklin does, and the mayor does, okay? We're not making anybody special, we're not treating anybody special, we're just governing our community by the way that our specific plans are already laid out. So, I just want to make sure, our community is very well-represented, and that's exactly, in my opinion, what Deputy Mayor Franklin is doing. And like I say, anybody in District 3 watching this that has a huge concern about an ADU, please let us know, and it's something we can readdress, but there has been no outcry that I'm aware of at all, and I don't feel like we are hurting your property values. If anything, we are making the property rights of every owner in the city of Vista the same across the board, and they all have to meet the same setback guidelines. It's not like we're putting them on top of each other and affecting your parking restrictions. So, I'm really passionate about this, obviously, but I feel like I've done a lot of investigation, I've done a lot of work on this item, and this is something that benefits our community as a whole. Are we going to be able to make everybody happy? No, never, but we're going to be able to make the majority of the people happy, and it's going to be a great benefit for the city of Vista, a great benefit for people's grandmothers, their college kids. I have a 20 and 18-year-old daughter who still live in my house, no clue when they're leaving, and I wouldn't have bought a house in Shadow Ridge, because I don't want to live in a community with those restrictions. That's all I have to say.
Deputy Mayor.
I just wanted to say that my sincerest apologies if I seem to not, I tried to mention that there, I thought there were communities, neighborhood... to mention that there, I, I thought there were communities, neighborhoods in each of the districts that had some of these characteristics in common with, with, you know, the planning that went into Shadow Ridge. I, I didn't for a minute mean to imply that there aren't neighborhoods that this might not be a fit for or that it might not be consistent with the character of. I, I'm simply pointing out those that are in my representative area that because I represented, I happen to have knowledge that it might not be consistent. I am, I remain open to any proposal. If there's a neighborhood in any other part of the city that this is not the right move for, I want to hear about it right now. And I, I just incredibly apologetic if it was, if what I said was misunderstood to mean that, you know, there, there aren't neighborhoods in other parts of the cities this might not be right for. You know, it's, Shadow Ridge is about 36, 37 years old. The rest of the city is, is quite a bit older on average. Not all the parts of the city are, but there's a, a great coherency to the master plan area because it was all built at the same time. And, and under similar planning restrictions and guidelines. That, that's the only thing that I intended to imply is unique about it. I'm not saying it's, it's a better area than the areas in the other parts of this. I'm just saying it has unique char, as all of the areas that we represent. And I have friends that, that live in, in every one of your districts, and I, I have, I have friends that live in a neighborhood in the first district where this would not fly. And I have friends that live in the second district where this would be like, I mean, they, they have big fences and they park trailers in their front yards. And somebody called me to complain about it once, and I said, why don't you live in an HUA if you don't want your neighbor to park a trailer in his yard? Like, you have the right to do, I'm, I'm all about that. You have the right to do that. You know, sometimes, you know, the city manager and I'll have conversations. He doesn't live in an HUA and, you know, and he's, you know, sometimes he likes that and sometimes he doesn't. I mean, that's the trade-off of, of agreeing to a book of rules when you buy a house. But I'm, I'm totally open to the conversation, and I, I, I'm just incredibly apologetic if I, my comments didn't seem to be respectful to any of the neighbors that you represent because you represent a beautiful part of the city, and they deserve the same consideration that the people I represent do.
Councilmember Rigby.
Alta Vista, Vista Estates are two neighborhoods where I have heard from my constituents. I had one constituent knock on my door on a Sunday afternoon because he knew who I was and where I lived, which is fine. But they also don't feel like they, they, there's one of me, and this has already been discussed so many times, they don't feel like it's worth saying anything or coming out for it. But you look at the purple zones, those are the places where it's already permissible. It's already on the books that you can do that. So if you're going to add all the yellow zones, but then you're going to exempt half the yellow zones, what's the point? Just keep it in the purple zones.
With that, I see no more speakers, so, well, I would close the public hearing.
If I could clarify for the record, sorry.
Sorry.
I just want to make sure we're clear. The move by deputy mayor was to adopt the ordinance recommended by staff as well as amending Section 1831-020 of the Development Code to add the R1B zone and exclude the three specific plans that the deputy mayor mentioned. Just want to clarify that for the record. Thank you.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, so now we can cast our votes. That motion passes forward with one. So moving on to our next thing, we have one discussion item this evening. It's D1, Proposed General Plan Amendment and Zone Change at the Northwest Corner of Sunset Drive and Sky Haven Lane. It's Rutherford Investments, and we will have a staff report. And then, is Rutherford here? Rutherford, yes, is that her?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Michael Ressler, our principal planner, will be presenting the report this evening.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. The item before you tonight is a discussion item regarding a proposed general plan amendment and zone change at the corner of Sunset Drive and Sky Haven Lane. The subject site contains three parcels totaling 4.27 acres. The properties are located generally on the northwest corner of Sunset Drive and Sky Haven Lane. The subject properties are divided into two individual areas. They're separated by a driveway that provides access to the Green Valley Mobile Home Park directly to the west. The existing general plan designation for the site is general commercial, GC, and medium high-density residential, MHD. The zoning for the site currently is commercial, C1, and multifamily residential, RM15. Here's an aerial of the site. The northerly portion of the site is generally vacant land. However, it does maintain a portion of the Buena Vista Creek located along the northerly property line. The southerly portion of the site is currently developed with a single-family home and associated site improvements. Staff has recently received a preliminary proposal to develop 34 lots for placement of manufactured homes on the subject site. Those homes would be age-restrictive to residents 55 years or older. The proposed use would require a general plan amendment from general commercial and medium-high-density residential to medium-density residential, MD. And the proposed use would also require zone change from commercial, C1, and multifamily residential, RM15, to mobile home park, MHP. On this slide, on the left-hand side, shows the existing general plan designation of general commercial and medium-high-density residential, and it also shows the proposed general plan designation of medium-density residential. On the right-hand side of this slide shows the existing zoning of the site being C1 and RM15, and the proposed zone change to mobile home park, MHP. Here's a conceptual site plan of the proposed manufactured home development, which would include 34 lots for future placement of manufactured homes. The plan also shows the existing driveway that provides access to the Green Valley Mobile Home Park directly to the west, which will be reserved and continue to provide access to that mobile home park. Here's an example of manufactured homes that could be placed on the lots that are proposed at this location. The general plan amendment and zone change request are at the discretion of the City Council with formal recommendation required by the Planning Commission. Staff brings all preliminary requests for general plan amendments and zone change before the City Council for direction prior to accepting any formal application. Should an application be accepted, the project would go through a formal review, and public hearings would be set at the City Council as well as the Planning Commission at the completion of the review process. With that, staff is requesting direction related to the acceptance of an application for a general plan amendment and a zone change on the subject site. That concludes staff's report. The applicant is here to provide a brief presentation to the City Council as well. Thank you.
Are you Thomas Wade?
Uh, no, Greg O'Hagan.
Oh. Okay, Greg, sorry.
Hello, Mayor Ritter. Hello, councilmembers and, and city staff. It's great to be here, and, my name is Greg O'Hagan, and I am with Rutherford Investments and with Green Valley Mobile Home Park. We're owners and operators of the park. I appreciate the time here. I want to just tell you briefly a little bit about who we are, why we're here, and how we got here, and the goals we're trying to achieve. Some of this will be a little redundant from the city's staff report. So we, Rutherford Investments, we are a friends and family, private-owned investment company. We own 13 manufactured housing communities, many of which are senior manufactured housing communities. Included in that are over 300 manufactured homes just along the 78 corridor here in North County, San Diego. We also helped lead, back in 2016, the lease accord for manufactured housing, along with a resident representative from our park, Steve Harvey, who's here today. Thank you, Steve. So that, you know, we're not only committed to an investment here in the community for over 14 years, but also for senior affordable housing industry as well. We're currently seeking a zoning, zoning change. Parcel number one, as the city staff report discussed, is currently an RM15 residential. Parcel number two is currently a commercial, C1 zoning. A little bit about how we got here. The current landowner on parcel number one, which is the single-family home, you know, has been our neighbor for many, many years. And I developed a relationship over our 14 or 15 years as neighbors. We would argue a little bit over who needs to trim the trees and, you know, all, all those neighborly things that everyone deals with. And unfortunately, he passed away recently, and his children, surprisingly to us, approached us about the opportunity with the land to extend our community due to the relationship that we had built with him. And they made it very clear, if we don't have this opportunity and can't do it, they're going to take it to the open market and sell it as, you know, a higher-density residential and as commercial. With this opportunity, we thought was very unique. We then approached our residents and had a community-wide meeting, and the goal of the meeting was to present our plan based on the due diligence we had done at that time. And I think it's very important to note, we approached the residents not, here's our plan, but the meeting tone was, is this something, residents, you want us to go pursue? It was very important that we gained feedback and answered questions. And the, the overall overwhelming result was, we believe there's support from the residents, and we're here aligned for this project. In your report, there are letters from residents that we received after the meeting, and their goals and what we pulled out of those letters here on the slide was, first was, will there be any impact to our current rent? And the answer is no. We followed that up by a memo out to the park acknowledging that and reiterating that no, this project will have no effect on your rent. Other things that were brought up were, we're going to offer more affordable senior housing in the area. It was very clear that residents were opposed to anything commercial right outside the park. They also want to be sure they maintain their lifestyle of a peaceful community and not have not only, you know, 55 and over, but the opportunity, if the current landowner puts it out to market, could be an all-age, all-age community as our neighbor. Minimizing crime, trespassing, these were all very big concerns from the residents. One of the things that was, that was an overwhelming discussion is improving the safety of the entrance and exit to our park. Currently, the visibility is not, is, is not well-maintained by the current owner of parcel number one. And this would give us an opportunity to work with staff and improve, which is very important, the entrance and exit to that driveway. Other resident comments we had there were things that they wrote on sign-in sheets as well. As the staff report indicated, here's a few examples of the type of homes as well. And it's consistent with the homes that are currently in the park. The middle, upper home there is one of the existing homes in the park. This also gives an opportunity for homes that will be brought in to be customized by seniors. And these are type of examples of things that they're able to offer. These still are affordable homes, but it allows a customization of a new manufactured home on the development. The plan also included in your, that we included on this is a preliminary plan and meeting the requirements of our proposed zoning change. We also offered a conceptual rendering of landscaping improvements, lighting, signage, other benefits to residents, increasing home value to the park. We appreciate the time, and we are hoping you'll support this zoning change. Any questions?
Thanks, Greg. I have, the council wants to speak. And then I also have a couple of speakers. Do you want to hear the speakers first?
Speakers.
Okay, stay close, and then if they have questions, they, you're right around here. Okay. So Thomas Wade, and followed by, I don't know, Joe Friesman, is he here still? Maybe he wants to say something. If you want to say something after, you can speak after Thomas.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Speaking in front of people in front of my greatest fears, so let's start with this. I gave a letter to the manager of Green Valley. I would like that, which he gave and turned to the city of Vista. I would like that letter returned to me. That letter was written by me as a private citizen. That letter in no way, shape, or form represents the ideas or thoughts or opinions of Santiago Estates LLC or the residents of Santiago Estates. I apologize for any confusion it may have caused. I have no connection with Green Valley management or the owners of Green Valley. Please accept my apology and hope that this puts an end to this matter. The only concern I have is traffic. Currently, it's difficult. Certain times of day, where I live in Santiago Estates, you can only turn right, you can't turn left. We have a sign saying no U-turns, but people who are impatient and don't want to wait at Hacienda and Emerald to make a left turn to go to Costco, go into our park, make an illegal U-turn so they don't have to wait in line. I hope a traffic study can be done because you may want to look at and see how it will affect the area as other areas of construction in Vista may in time influence our Emerald Drive. I want to thank you so much for letting me speak.
Thank you, sir. Joe, did you want to speak, or?
Just one more point, basically, is that, uh...
Come on, you have to come down to the microphone down here.
Basically, we're going to have a new park in front of an old park, is what we're going to, what it amounts to. My problem is, is that let's take care of the old park and the infrastructure within it. We have crumbling retaining walls. We have the common areas that need re-gravel terribly. We have railroad ties sitting on common areas and so forth, and it just looks terrible. And I would like to see something done about it. Aside from that, I just earlier discussed the water issues I had and the health issues and so forth, and that'll do it.
Okay, thank you, sir. So councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for that, that report. And Mr. O'Hagan, I, I saw the letters from the residents after your meeting with them, and all of the letters that were sent to us were very positive, and I didn't hear anything from anybody that was negative. And I, I do support the zone change. I think it's beneficial. It brings in additional senior housing, which is something that I have been an advocate for, for many years in our community. And I, I think it would be a much better fit in this neighborhood than commercial or one of the general plans says, medium-high-density residential. So I, I think this would be a nice fit right there. And I know the property that you're talking about, and I've seen, and I suspected something had happened with the owner because the landscape was wild vegetation, but it was maintained. And lately, it has not been, and the house is almost disappearing behind the overgrown vegetation. So it was apparent something had happened. And so I'm, I'm glad to see that the family is willing to sell the property to you for this project. I do have a question for you, though. It was brought to my, this is my district. In fact, I live just down the street. It was brought to my attention about one of the other problems in the existing park regarding water retention and having some issues with drainage. And I understand from my discussion with a constituent that, that discussion with park management or the management company owners really didn't go anywhere, and there's been no resolution, yet there's been continuing damage. So I wanted to know, with your discussion and presentation, and when we met a couple of weeks ago, talked about the, the... of weeks ago, talked about the improvements to the existing park and trying to bring the new part of it in seamlessly, so, you know, it's one big park. The types of improvements that you're talking about are great, but are you going to be working on some of these other improvements to the park that exist, like the water and the drainage
I believe I know the individual home that you're talking about with the drainage.
I understand it's multiple homes.
Okay, that, that...
But, go ahead.
Sure. The, we have installed French drains, we've done improvements to drainage of the park. We do sit, you know, on a slope. I would be welcome to meet with any resident that wants to discuss it. I have met with a resident who is, you know, currently discussing at this meeting. Part of that drainage issue that, at that home site, was due to a irrigation break. So photos that were given to us were, were due to that. Since then, we have monitored it. Our manager, Bruce, has continually monitored it after rains, during rains, you know, during dry season as well. But I am absolutely willing to meet with any resident and discuss that with them.
I would appreciate that.
Of course.
And I'd like to be there as well. And I'm going to ask if we could have somebody from staff join us for the tour to look at this, because I think it's really important. I think the plan as it's presented to us, I'm in favor of this. And so I would move that we approve this plan. But I would also like to see a condition put in that drainage issues throughout the park are addressed and dealt with, so that we don't have any further issues with the drainage. And I, and with the creek beds that we have running all through our city, it could be something, and I know that there is a creek that runs right along there. So I would feel better for myself and for my constituents if we've got a walkthrough and a tour, and with staff to join us, so that we can look at the issue and see what can be done to permanently correct the issue. So if we could set that up with staff, I would appreciate that. Mr. City Manager, if I can go ahead and request that. And with that, I'm confident that we can get past that issue. And so I would go ahead and move that we approve this plan as presented and adopt the zone change as presented.
And Councilmember, I'd also like, just like a quick response to issue that was brought up with retaining walls. I'm not sure where that's come from. We've actually installed four retaining walls in the last three years, and we're doing another one in the next three months.
Okay.
And we're, you know, recently just resealed streets. You know, done many improvements to the park, and I welcome all councilmembers to come visit our park.
So I would love a tour of the park, and so that we can see what's going on.
I welcome that.
And I mean, how, I mean, I'm there frequently, I mean, I know people there, and that's actually our polling place, so I go vote there, too.
Right.
It's a beautiful park.
Yes.
So I would be happy to have a tour and just to see, see your park and what you've done and what you are planning to do.
I always encourage that, and I look forward to the meeting with staff and residents.
Excellent, thank you.
Councilmember Green.
All right, I agree with Councilwoman Rigby 100%. I will definitely go ahead and second her motion with her stipulations that you take care of the drainage issue. And I also like the one-big-park comment that she said is, you know, you had a resident say, hey, you're going to build a brand-new park out front, and you're going to leave the old one behind. And I think the idea of touring the whole thing and making it feel like one cohesive park is great. So we need deferred maintenance, anything that needs to be taken care of to kind of pull it all together. If you own the whole thing, let's make it all look good. So definitely 100% second that motion.
I appreciate your support.
Councilmember Contreras.
I'm going to row the same boat as my previous two colleagues here. You know, I think this is a great extension of the mobile home park that exists. The zoning change will help to have a more contiguous feel there. And then for those that are concerned about traffic, I would, I would estimate that the vehicle miles traveled would be higher with like a commercial zone there and higher density. So I think this is a really good plan. We definitely, you know, need more senior housing. So I really appreciate all of Councilmember Rigby's points. They're all valid, and I would love to tour, too.
I would love it.
Sign me up, I'll be there.
That's great.
So thank you.
Yes, I appreciate the support. And also, I know we will be conducting a traffic study prior, and this is a preliminary time now, so all of those will be working with city staff on those next steps.
Deputy Mayor.
Well, thank you very much for coming to present. I'm also supportive of your project. I can't conceive of a commercial use that would make sense, that wouldn't in fact be a detriment to the residents. I think the homes that are proposed are really very nice. I have friends that live in manufactured and mobile homes, and many of these homes are so much nicer than we think of. And in fact, when you're inside of them, you don't know you're in a mobile home, and some of them really can blow you away how nice they are. And I've been to your park, and I, you know, from what I can see, you do a great job of maintaining it and reinvesting. I think tonight, we're going to have to have a public hearing on this general plan amendment, so I think we're not quite ready for necessarily a vote. But before we are able to publicly approve it, or before the planning department approves it, you'll have to submit a plan for drainage and environmental remediation and all the soil stuff. Mr. Conley's an expert on that, and Mr. Wrestler know a lot more about it than I do, but I think that's going to be a detailed part of your engineering considerations. So with that, I would just offer my support for the proposal as well.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
And I join my colleagues. I approve the, prove it, think it looks, sounds like a good project, and I'm happy that you're going to do that, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
I think you don't need a vote, you just need, just need...
No, Mayor, just direction is sufficient.
Direction.
Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, thanks for coming.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Go ahead. So I have, we'll move on to our oral communications. I have three here. I have John Batroff, followed by Julie, I don't have a last name on that, and followed by Suzanne Hume.
Madam Mayor, while those citizens are walking up, can I just say, I wanted to say too, I was very impressed with the amount of outreach that you did and the communicating with your residents. We appreciate that. Not all the folks that want to make a change do that, and that's very impressive. It's great work you did.
So are the speakers still here? Is John here?
Hopefully I have all my notes here. Hi again, my name is John Butter with Clean Earth for Kids, and I wanted to touch on something we touched, talked about earlier with Sandag, is air pollution and air quality. The American Lung Association has San Diego as the sixth worst smog in the country. So we think of, you know, our area in San Diego and the beach, you know, we've got really good air, and we don't. And a big contributor of that is air pollution coming from cars. Over a quarter of air pollution comes from transportation, and a big way to deal with that is something like the Sandag proposal, obviously, to reduce the amount of cars and increase mass transit. Another way is, of course, planting trees, which I know we've been working with one of your Public Works guys to work on that in the City of Vista. Another way is simply to stop idling. We've talked about that before, and we would ask that to be on the next agenda item. Idling is a major contributor to air quality, and it adds 30 million tons of CO2 into the atmosphere every year in America. And it's very easy to stop. If you're not in traffic, just turn off your car. You don't need to buy anything, you don't need to do anything. It's very straightforward, and it reduces air pollution, reduces health costs because of asthma and everything else. It can also save a lot of money, particularly in a city for fleets. I've spoken to the Ocean, City of Oceanside Fleet Manager, and they're working on no idling throughout their entire fleet. He told me that because of idling, they're having to change the oil in their vehicles every 30,000 miles instead of every 100,000 miles, for example. So, you know, you're wasting gas, you're burning oil, you're damaging your engines, you're reducing the life of your fleet. So that's a, you know, way of reducing costs for the city. It's also a way of increasing air quality. I've spoken to Doris, so hopefully we'll be meeting with each of you very, very soon about all this. And I think that's it, I got my three minutes.
Okay, Julie?
Okay, um, okay, there we go. Okay, hi, I'm Julie Cabrera, and I'm on the youth board with Clean Earth for Kids. And I would, today I would like to ask for better innovative solutions and better public transportation, such as shuttles and trolleys. I don't want to drive, me personally, because I don't want to add more pollution to climate change, and I don't want to leave a big carbon footprint. And I don't want to add more pollution into the air that could be inhaled by others in our community. And as we know, pollution, it can damage one's lungs, and there have been like surgeries where like they do biopsies and they see like people's lungs, and you can tell like that some are blacker than others. And at this rate, if we have more highways and more lanes on them, then there will be more carbon dioxide going into the environment, and those living nearby, they will be inhaling more carbon monoxide. And as we already know, a lot of people, when they drive on the freeway, they have their windows down. So if you think about it, when you're driving and you have the windows down, and there's all these extra lanes, there's still going to be a lot of traffic regardless of the event, you know, like Fourth of July or something. And then you're stuck in traffic, and you're just going to be inhaling all this carbon monoxide. And so I would like to have more innovative transportation, because it would help me save money on transportation, and it wouldn't have me pay for insurance. And it would also help me get like, get to a job after school, or, and it would also help me save for college. I'm also here tonight to ask for a no-idling resolution with signs and education, and those with pre-existing conditions from toxic...
I need you to wrap up, if you could. Time, your time is up.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
But thank you. Sorry, thank you, Suzanne.
Hi, thank you so much, and we're so excited, you can hold that, babe. We're so excited, we're cleanearthforkids.org. I'm a teacher, educational director. We're excited to work with the City of Vista. Shout out to Public Works Yale Jeffrey for working with us. We're excited about the October 19 tree planting with Cal Fire, and building bridges with the school district. As you probably know, Vista Unified School District has passed a no-idling resolution, calling for signs and education. So we're running free contests, of course, and so students will draw their signs, like reminding people to turn off their engines, because one minute of idling has more carbon monoxide than three packs of cigarettes. So we want, and as a teacher, I am so regretting not knowing this and not doing anything about it when I had parking lot duty and other things, and worked at the district office level as well. So I'll make up for that and get some things going now. Okay, so kids will be making no-idling signs, those will be put on metal signs. So the City of Oceanside has already included no-idling in their policies for the Climate Action Plan, and we're excited to work with Russ Cunningham over there in Oceanside. He presents everywhere. Anyway, with so many innovative strategies, and we would like the City of Vista to do that as well. So we would like two things tonight for you to do, so besides continue to work for the city, and thank you so much for all you do. Okay, so one, we would like to have a no-idling resolution, and we're not talking about an ordinance with ticketing, although we know that that would actually be the best. That's already been done in so many cities, including Utah, well, that's a state, but, you know, cities everywhere. So to keep children safe, and we need it for habits, because what's happening is, people are backing their cars in to sidewalks, and moms have to walk by, and dads with little babies in strollers. Woo!
And there's time without...
All right. And no pesticides, please, like the City of Oceanside is doing. Please meet with us, put that on the next agenda. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And that is the end of our public speakers. Thank you for coming tonight, and thank all of you for sticking around. I have a few, we have some comments here, so I'll go ahead and do the comments here, mine, and then I will, I'm going down the road for you guys. So first is one of the most popular Broadway musicals. West Side Story opens tomorrow, August 14, at the Moonlight Amphitheater. Ticket information is available online at moonlightstage.com. And it's a great show, so if you haven't seen it, come on down and check it out. Parents can take the night off this Saturday, August 17, by dropping their kids off at the Jim Porter Rec Center. The staff will keep the kids busy with activities, and parents can enjoy a night out. So learn more about that at vista recreation dot com. Third, applications are being accepted for our Fall Vista Leadership Academy. The program gives residents a chance to learn how the city operates, and you can check online at cityofvista.com for more information about that, about our Leadership Academy. And last, the city has designated cool zones that are free, air-conditioned places where the public can stay cool during the hot days. And I know the next couple of days are supposed to be really hot. So the Vista Library and McClellan Senior Center are designated places. The cool zone hours and tips on staying cool are available online at cityofvista.com. And with that, I'll go on down the line here and talk to Councilmember Rigby, see if she has any announcements.
I just want to say thank you to staff. You guys do a really great job, and shout out, I know somebody gave a shout out to some of the staff, I want a shout out to all the staff. So, and Mr. Conley and Mr. Wrestler for helping me out earlier with some questions that I had, I appreciate it very much. And welcome back, we took July off, welcome back, so, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Franklin.
I'll second that appreciation for our staff. They do, they do a fantastic job for us and for our community. And thank you to all who came to speak to us tonight, and thank you to my colleagues for a great, spirited, and...
[laughing]
Productive meeting.
Councilmember Green.
I'm going to go ahead and not thank staff, because they already got thanked twice, so whatever, hope you guys really appreciate that. It is Taco Tuesday in the City of Vista, we have a lot of amazing eating establishments that are open until 10 o'clock, so if you choose to have tacos in the City of Vista, we would greatly appreciate that. Also, just want to thank my colleagues for everything. We don't always agree on 100% of things, but we all have a great heart for our city, and we work really hard because we love this town, and I think all of us do a great job. So thank you so much to my colleagues for working so hard, really appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Councilmember Contreras.
Feels real good to be back on the horse. I was really excited to come to this meeting, and it turned out fabulous. Always great discussion, amazing staff, makes it, makes our job that much easier, and when we get the information that we need to make the most informed decision possible. I wanted to highlight that at the Senior Center, Wednesday, August 21, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., we are having a phenomenal party. It's National Senior Citizens Day. I will be there in dancing form, hopefully that does not alarm you, but...
I'm just asking.
But I hope to see a ton of people there, and we'll, I'll have more to say at the next meeting, but y'all have a good night.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to let everybody know that the Wave Water Park is now closed on the weekends, if you didn't know that. But they will be open on Labor Day, as well as Friday night, August 16, and they'll be open on weekends through the end of September, so one announcement. As you mentioned, National Senior Citizens Day. The city released the request for proposals for the Community Choice Energy Consultant. That was done last week. We anticipate bringing forward a consultant to the city council either November or December and for approval, and then going from there. The process will likely take another six-plus months beyond that, once the consultant is hired, but wanted to make sure everybody knew that. And then finally, pleased to announce that the city received the Award for Excellence from the Government Finance Officers Association for our CAFER, and this is for the fiscal year 1718, and it's in financial reporting, and we're very proud of our finance department, so thank you.
City Attorney Darryl Piper.
Nothing this evening? Thanks, Mayor.
How about City Clerk, Kathy or Claire? Neither one? Okay, with that, thank you to the staff for sticking out to the very, very end, we appreciate you, and thank you to all of you for sticking out to the very end. So we are now adjourned, 8 o'clock on the dot.